I'd like to bring up one item on the new business that I didn't think of until earlier today. But I think the vast majority of people in the city and the people in this council heard the day after the election some unfounded allegations against the City of Lynn, the voting process, and the city election office. And anybody that knows Mary Audley understands that Mary Audley is somebody who lives by the letter of the law, who lives directly by the book, that anybody that she has any issue with, she goes directly to the Secretary of State. She got zero, zero complaints the day of the election about anybody being pressured to vote any particular way. There were no written complaints, no oral complaints. And to me, I think that those allegations were unfounded. They were level of solid rakes. And I'd like to stand up here and publicly say that I think that our election department, and Mary Audley specifically, have people of high character and integrity did a great job on election day.
Good luck, Mary.
New business.
Okay. In business, order that the City of Lynn approves the filing of an application with the interagency permitting board for the designation of Lynn in 304346 Linway, Linway Parcel 347603, Brerlinway Parcel 6774950, Blossom Street Assessor's Parcel 6775120, pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 43D of the Massachusetts General Laws as amended pursuant to Section 11 of Chapter 205 of the Acts of 2006.
Councilor Breck, Mr. President, for you and two members, I'd just like to thank a number of folks that have been working diligently on the 43D process, specifically Jamie Marsh, who was the city's point person. So right now, this is really going to be some of the last parcels that are going to be included on our initial application via state, and that should wrap it up over the next week or two, and then Jamie would then go before the state for final approval. Once that is approved, we'll gain the expedited permitting capabilities from the state as well. So it's been a long process, but I really want to commend Jamie as well as EDIC, Mike Donovan, and the council for approving for this.
Motion made, seconded to approve. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilor Biden, yes. Councilor Cahill, yes. Councilor Capano, yes. Yes, Councilor Calucci, yes. Councilor Creighton, yes. Yes, Councilor Seer, yes. Yes, Councilor Floyd, yes. Yes, Councilor Lozey, yes. Yes, Councilor Net, yes. Councilor Phelan, yes. Yes, Councilor Trahan, yes. Councilor Levin, yes.
Emergency Councilor Creighton, yes. Motion made, seconded. Discussion on the emergency. Roll call.
Councilor Biden, yes. Councilor Cahill, yes. Councilor Capano, yes. Councilor Calucci, yes. Yes, Councilor Creighton, yes. Yes, Councilor Seer, yes. Yes, Councilor Floyd, yes. Yes, Councilor Lozey, yes. Yes, Councilor Net, yes. Councilor Phelan, yes. Yes, Councilor Trahan, yes. Yes, Councilor Levin, yes.
Councilor Floyd.
Earlier tonight at the Finance Committee, we had police in fighting the grants control. And out on the floor tonight, we talked about grants, proving them and others. Could we have the grant that I talked about to a meeting and let us know how he's doing and quick procuring?
Sure. Put that in a formal motion to ask the Gray Harters to come forward, second that motion. Let us know how many grants is applied for obtained, what's in the works, things like that. Motion made, seconded. Discussion. Next council meeting. All who's in favor, opposed. Motion carries. Councilor Creighton.
Mr. President, for you and two members, I'd like to remove from the table a motion to set down a public hearing for a $40,000 bond relative to public infrastructure investment.
Yep. Motion made to move from the table, seconded. Seconded. Discussion on removing from the table. This is just to remove from the table. Actually, I know tabling is a non-debatable issue. If I can be refreshed, is I removed from the tables a debatable issue? Yes? Okay. This is just, I would like to limit discussion whether it comes off the table. If it comes off the table, then further discussion will happen. Questions? To remove from the table. Roll call.
Councilor Biden, yes. Councilor Cahill, yes. Councilor Capano, yes. Yes, Councilor Calucci, yes. Yes, Councilor Creighton, yes. Yes, Councilor Seer, yes. Yes, Councilor Floyd, yes. Councilor Lozey, no. No, Councilor Net, yes. Yes, Councilor Phelan, yes. Yes, Councilor Trahan, no. None of us.
Motion. Councilor Creighton.
Mr. President, just briefly, because we have discussed this numerous times so far, but I would just like to remind everyone that this isn't just to be set down for a public hearing. We're not moving on the motion. This is just to further debate. And I was suggesting down for December 18th public hearing to get people, give more time to consider the merits of it.
Motion made to set down December 18th public hearing, seconded. Councilor Seer.
Hi, Mr. President. We've gone on and on about this, and I still feel the same ways I do, that it's not ready for us to pray into the council for a discussion yet, just because of so many different issues. And I agree with some of the things that are in there. I really do. But I think this is such an important thing, that I think we ought to include the public in this, because I'm so afraid that it is going to jeopardize the possibility of building a new middle school, as well as any other schools in the city. And not for us to do anything like that. We have to build a new middle school that I still call it Eastern, but there are other schools that are in the pipeline as well. And along with saying that, I would like to make a motion to amend to the bond and add $1.1 million for Lynn Classical High School repairs and $1.1 million for Lynn Tech Roof and Windows and nearby in accordance with the city charter, have the bond placed on the ballot in the New Year at the same time, and as a separate question, as a bond for the new Marshall Middle School. I think, I'm trying to say this.
Here's a motion on the floor. I'll check in, seconded. Seconded. Discussion on the amendment. Councilor Seer.
Thank you. Now, we've seen this in Washington where the Democrats and Republicans, yes, they'll make, and enough gets accomplished. And I think we've kind of, we're at that point on the city council. I think if this was really that great of a bond, a $4 million bond, you know, a lot more councils are agreeing. I think that by me proposing this, it's a compromise, and I'm saying that we don't need to have all these repairs done. I agree with that. But I think the public should have a say in what's being done in the city, especially when we're talking about a $4 million bond that is definitely going to be raised in the tax, and I don't care whether it's by $10,000, or $100,000, or $1,000,000, and then we'll go back again in the summertime and ask the public to actually vote on the bond. So I think by giving them the choices, if they have that confidence, and the councilors who are proposing, if they have that confidence that the public wants this, well, then let's give them the opportunity to vote on it. That's my feeling.
Councilor Creighton.
Mr. President, for you and two members, I'd urge all the councilors to vote no on this amendment. I would remind everyone again that this is just to be set down for a public hearing. Any amendments to the substance of the bond would appreciate at a public hearing. So I would further say, when it's implied that it's not involving the public while asking for a public hearing, it seems to contradict itself a bit there. And I would additionally like to remind everyone here that this is not to raise taxes. This bond will not raise people's taxes. And we can have the city assess to come up and clarify that. We can have this discussion with the power heads across the board at a public hearing. We've debated this three times now. We're going on the floor, let's just have a public hearing. Why do we have to amend the substance of it here when we can just set this down? So again, I would urge my councilors to vote no on the amendment, but yes, set down for a public hearing so we can have this fruitful discussion. Thank you.
Councilor Lozey.
Mr. President, thank you for allowing this debate to continue on whether we should set down this $4 million bond that, as my colleague Councilor Seer mentioned, most of us are probably in favor of many of the items on this list. But as we discussed at the last meeting, you know, I know that Councilor Creighton does not consider this a tax increase, and it's a matter of semantics, but whether you're a homeowner and you're using your credit card, just because you have a $10,000 credit limit, and you, doesn't mean you can go out and charge up your credit card. You're going to have to pay for it. And whether you consider it a tax increase or not, it has to be paid for. We've just heard from Councilor Seer, the monies that are necessary to fix up classical, which we heard at the last meeting from Inspection Services Director Mike Donovan, the importance of doing it classical. Our schools, many of them need vital work done, and it requires money. We can, we can argue till the cows come home whether or not money we borrow is a tax increase or not. I just don't think, again, briefly, without going in depth about the arguments, this was not properly vetted. This list of all these wish list items have not been discussed properly, and I know the argument that then let it go to a public hearing. I just feel that more could be done, more could have been done to do a proper review. And I don't think there's any harm in the amendment to send it to the voters to decide. There's no harm in allowing the people of Lynn to make their own decision on whether or not they want us to borrow to bond our four or more million dollars for wish list items. And again, just to point out, my Board One, I represent areas that would not be covered under federal state grants, where many of these parks can be covered under state and federal grants. I just don't think, I don't want to beat a dead horse on it, but, Mr. President, I'm in favor of this amendment and allowing the voters of Lynn to decide the merits of this proposal. Thank you.
Councilor Calucci.
President, I'd like to move to the attorney.
Just, I just wanted, if you don't mind, and I'm going to, you can have as much time as you want. Would you just read the amendment one more time? Start going.
Motion to amend the bond and add $1.1 million for Lynn Classical High School repairs and $1.1 million for the Lynn Tech Roof and Breed Windows and thereby, in accordance with the city charter, have the bond placed on the ballot in the New Year at the same time, and as a separate question, as a bond for the new Marshall Middle School. Thank you. Councilor Calucci.
But if we, you and Councilor Creighton, set it up for a public hearing, what's the next step? If, like, we don't agree on a price yet, and some of the councils want the school, they want that, so how will we go from a public hearing to the next step, if we have to have it on the, for vote?
The question that you're asking is, if you had a public hearing, could you at that point make revisions to the amount of the bond? I don't see why you couldn't. Councilor Capano.
I just think that, you know, I believe, Councilor Breck, was told that at this meeting we would be having a vote to set this down for a public hearing in December. An amendment, I would think, would have to be placed on at the public hearing. This is, you know, not to repeat what Councilor Breck said, but this is supposed to be a vote to place this on next month's agenda. And I don't see what the problem is, that many of the people here who are opposed to it were saying that, you know, they want to do it a couple weeks ago, but we'll do it at this meeting. Now, I don't see what the problem is. We've debated this longer than we have debated things that were at public hearings, you know? So all these issues can come up at a public hearing. If we want to make an amendment, we make it at a public hearing. If we want to vote for it, we do it at a public hearing. Want to vote against it? We do it at a public hearing. We're voting to have a public hearing. This isn't a public hearing, and we've discussed this three or four times, about at length, with no public hearing. Can't we just set this down? And if we want to amend it at the next meeting, maybe that's the time to do it? I don't think the time to do that is now.
I'm going to have Attorney Vitaly answer the question whether it's a proper amendment, because I think that's what you were asking at the very beginning. And I think all the councilors know this, but just to, and just to make myself feel a little more comfortable, the charter indicates that if a bond is $4 million or less, then the council has the ability to bond that with a public hearing. If the council wants to bond more than $4 million, $4 million and one cent, there's no public hearing. It actually goes on the ballot for the voters to decide. I think, you know, so let's, can I take your question? I'm going to come right back to Councilor Capano. If we could ask Attorney Vitaly, if you could follow up on the very first comment that Councilor Capano asked.
I'm not sure you're at $4 million yet. The motion I was asking is only to set down a public hearing, but there's a list of items on that that total $4 million. But to amend that, to add to $4 million, just to say, before we establish, the $4 million bond, the items in there are accepted. And at this stage, you almost made a motion to approve that bond. You made a motion to set down a public hearing on that bond, right?
Okay, so take that a step further, just so we have clarification. With Councilor Seer's amendment that added $2.2 million to the $4 million bond, so it's a $6 million bond that's been seconded and debated now, where are we at that point?
Well, I don't think you're at the $4 million even yet, right? The motions are before you now, is to set down for a public hearing. The issue is the $4 million bond. You have not voted for $4 million or for any bonds at this stage. You only have a motion in front of you to set down for a public hearing of a $4 million bond.
Okay. Councilor Seer.
This bond was three, four weeks ago, was proposed, the motion was made, to set it down for a public hearing. All of these things were red hot, let that be. And what Councilor Creighton is asking for is to take it off the table and set it down for a public hearing. And my answer, Councilor Capano, is why I'm adding this amendment, is because everybody goes, oh, where's the hand above, not getting approved when it goes up the bond, before we do it sometime June or July. And we're talking about setting this down, where if it's not $4 million, it's very close to the $4 million. And I think it would put a very bad taste in people's mouth if we approve this. That's why I'm asking to add those things to it, so that it does have to go up to the voters, to let them vote on it. And to save money, we can do it at the same time, because we have to have a special election anyways, of middle school. So, I mean, you know, we can have this discussion, in, put it down for a public hearing, or whatever it may be. I'm asking that that be added to that discussion. That's why I'm asking for the amendments.
Councilor Capano.
I think if there's an amendment, it should be made at a public hearing, because I also think that sort of denies Councilor Creighton's to make his argument. I mean, it sort of defeats the whole purpose of the argument. I think that, you know, we have a proposal there that's been worked on, you know, diligently. A lot of work has been put into this. And, thank you, Attorney. The idea is that we would take that up for debate at some point at a public hearing, and then if you, you know, add to it, you know, add something to an amendment, or take something out of the draw, or add, like you said, that's the time, the time to do that is at the public hearing. You know, I think that, you know, there were suggestions made that we should wait, that this shouldn't come up ahead of time, that we should wait until today, because we would have a public hearing set down. And I think today is the day. And we can't just keep talking about it like, like it's a public hearing. It's not. This is just a vote to have a public hearing. And we keep coming around in circles with this. It's kind of frustrating for us, because, you know, there are arguments that could be made on both sides, while they are not coming out right now, because we're waiting for the public hearing, or other people are waiting for the public hearing. We don't have that right now. This is just a vote to have that.
Councilor Floyd.
I agree with Councilor Capano. There was good and bad on this. There's some things I'm confused about. We got the grant money for the boat slips, and that's on here. The mayor was going to pay for the air conditioning, and that's on here. I had hoped to get the three courts done for Jamie. I'm not sure whether that stands to my fault. I should have talked to him. But there are many things on here that I'm very interested in, as anyone who's getting some work that out. And so I agree with people, let's have a public hearing, and maybe that grant right will be hit, we find out if anything's coming in that way, it'll give us a chance to debate it. And should be asking Mike Donovan, Kathy Leifert to come back, but we're a little nervous about the priorities and stuff, the tech roof and the breed windows, and making sure that's getting done before we get into this. So maybe we're going to have a long night and straighten this out at a public hearing. Thank you.
Councilor Seer.
Thank you. I'll just answer Councilor Floyd. That is a share of the money that we have to come up with to fix Classical Breed and Tech. We had Mike Donovan here a few weeks ago, and, you know, $1.1 million for classicals to repair, the storage line that goes underneath the building. We have to do that. We're not going to get any grant money. It's not going to come from the state or anywhere else. That's our responsibility, as well as tech roof and the windows of school. But, you know, and even when we're talking here, we're really, we're really not ready to bring this to a debate, because the motion we made that night, we all know it, to approve the bond. So I would like my motion added to that bond. That's why I proposed it. You know, we can't even agree on that, and we'll probably not by the end of the night, but.
Councilor Floyd.
Councilor Seer, that night I may have voted no.
Oh, I understand. Yeah, well, I respect that.
Councilor Trahan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I totally agree with Councilor Seer. I think that we should let the public know, we're on television now, the paper's here, let people know that we're not talking about $4 million, that we're talking about it could be $6, $7 million. I mean, to me, it's going to be foolish to borrow $4 million, and then after we approve it, a month later, if something happens at Classical, we need one point of money. I mean, that, then where are we going to get that money from? You know, it's just to keep doing this and doing this, and then you talk about special elections. I know, maybe Mary knows, you know, not to hold to the penny, but how much does it cost for us to hold a special election each time?
Well, in this case, we'd have to purchase the ballots as well, so it could cost about $45,000.
So you're talking $45,000, and then you're talking, oh, we have to go to the schools in June and July? So to me, I just think you should let the people decide. I think it's foolish for us. And we have this school, one of the most important things that's been coming down the road in this city, and, you know, nothing's bigger than education. We should be worried about this school. We should be, I mean, this is a great thing. I totally agree with you. There's a lot of great things on here. I know Councilor Cahill, I know Councilor Creighton are proud of us. I know, and they included all of us, and it's very important to all of us. But right now, that school has to be our focus. I mean, that's going to be the most important thing. And I'm so afraid that if we try to give the ratepayers a $4 million bond with a tax increase, I'm, you know, anybody says they're going to pay for it down the road, and then we go in June or July to the special election and borrow another $15,000, $15,000 million, the people aren't going to vote for it. They are not going to vote for it. I've been around the city every day. I talk to people that have been watching us on television, and I'm telling you, they are not going to vote for that school if we push this through. They have, they're just not going to do it. So I say, as Councilor Seer, it's a great idea, let's put everything on there. If you're going to do it all, let's put a wish list. Let's get the schools taken care of, the tech roof's leaking, you know, Councilor Capano's one was showing he wants to see that fixed. I mean, there's a whole list here, and the list isn't even accurate. There's a lot of things being done right now that are on this list that we could cross out. So I just think we should, you know, work together, get everything on there, send it out to the ratepayers, and let them decide. The people that are paying the taxes, it shouldn't be left on all level of us, when it should go out to everybody. Everybody should have a say in this, not just us. Thank you.
Councilor Cahill.
Mr. President, I appreciate all the opinions I had. But productive, I would move the end line for the amendment at some points. You know, there is a pass pressing for this. 2005, the city council voted for a full name of a bond, the center, only in March 2005, turned around into January 2006, the $10 million bond for classical. I think the voters of the City of Lynn understand that economic problems are important, that communications is important, that hospitals are important, that they're not going to choose one project or another. And we can have a fruitful debate with our CFO and other financial people, what the ramifications financially would be to the City of Lynn and its residents. And we've got to look forward to that debate, and if this doesn't make it pass, a public hearing, it doesn't really pass a public hearing. But I think we're at least in our abilities to do the debate. So I would move for the amendment to be voted on at this point.
Okay, we're going to make sure that everybody has their say. Thank you, counselor. I think Councilor Trahan was next. Thank you for your remarks.
I'll just be brief. I just wanted to respond to Councilor Cahill. I think back in 2005, the economy was doing a lot better. I think today, with people on work and the way things are in this country today, that I think we want two bonds back to back with the ratepayers of the city, just, it's not going to fly. And I wouldn't expect it to, you know, you're talking $20 million with the bond, and so I just, that was my answer to that.
Councilor Capano.
Yes, I respect everyone's opinions. I mean, people feel strongly about this, you know, on both sides. And so I think the best thing to do to impede, to add this debate at a public hearing, I would like to call a question.
Okay, I'm going to make sure that everybody has their say. Thank you again. Councilor Calucci.
If this goes to a public hearing, the people who just look at, like, in each eye, if you go, if you ask the government to leave something, that's what's going to happen, is all my time here, something like this, now they have, or my advice to that, it's always in the school where one struck, one, so I'm just curious, all that can work.
Is that a question for the city solicitor? Vitaly?
Public hearing would be called on the items that are listed here. That doesn't preclude the council from making changes to any, to any public hearing, or putting conditions on, or whatever. But the topic would be this $4 million and these amounts. Those items, that's correct.
Councilor Creighton.
Mr. President, for you and two members, I'd like to ask my one more question. So the motion that I made was to set down a public hearing for a $4 million infrastructure investment bond. Now, I guess, I wasn't clear on either whether or not that can be amended to change the actual substance, or formally known bond is not what we'd be voting on, should Councilor Seer's amendment pass, to be set down, since we would be setting down in a separate manner.
If you exceed the $4 million, then, then the bond has to go out to the voters.
So we wouldn't have a chance to debate the bond here as a, as a council?
As I understand it, the council's amendment is to add to the $4 million sum, to present a bond in excess of $4 million.
And if, I guess, if it's in excess of $4 million, will the council still have an opportunity to debate that here, or is it automatically going to straighten to the other?
The bond, we have to go to the voters, it's in excess of $4 million.
And would we have an opportunity to discuss the bond here in comparison?
Again, I think this is, the way it's being presented right now, is that, is that you are effectively not having, not moving to go forward with a percentage of one, the amount in excess of $4 million.
I understand your question. What you're saying is, please correct me if I'm wrong, if, even though it may not be a public hearing, at $6 million or $6.2 million, will the council have the ability to internally debate it in and of ourselves? And a vote of the council, the answer to that would be yes.
Okay. So just real quickly, I would like to move to a vote on Councilor Seer's motion after everyone gets a chance to speak. But again, it's been implied here that this is a solution to make this more public. When we call for a public hearing in August, and then subsequent meetings afterwards, When we call for a public hearing in August, and then subsequent meetings afterwards, there's nothing more public than a public hearing. We want the public to be here to discuss it, we want to have our city officials here to discuss it. But to have a third public hearing when it's a public hearing, I believe is unfair, and I was, under the assumption that we wouldn't move forward, saying that this bond, that we've worked on, likely would be downed for a public hearing.
Counsel Seer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not trying to table, I'm not trying to stop a public hearing. I'm doing this, and you actually answered the question, but I'm adding it to a job for the board that we discussed, is what I'm doing. And we still have the right to send it out to the voters, as we all agree, that add votes. Get back to something Counsel Cahill said about back in two thousand and five, two thousand and six. I'm backed for against the law, Manny Ball was following down, and Classical was following down. We had to do something, we had to respond. And we put it out to the voters, and they responded. So, I mean, that's what I'm asking us to do again. Just in the last two weeks, we've been meeting weekly on middle school. And just in the last two weeks, I found out the cost of the middle school is going to blow up minimum five million dollars, because of, because of the construction cost. That's just in the last two weeks. And we don't know what else is going to pop up between now, next month, or even by the time we do decide to put that bond out to vote. All I'm saying is that if we've already put down that these are the items that we're going to discuss, at that, the yard proposal, Counsel, at that public hearing, and I'm asking to add an amendment to it. That's all. I'm not trying to prevent us from having that discussion.
Consul Kalucia.
Can we just do this, maybe this is all right? Have a public hearing, see if the public decides to reel this stuff down, get the classicals into the mix, and agree under four million, that we do deal. Not until we go to the ballot, but I think that's the best way to do it.
Counsel Nat.
I have a question. So if we decided at 2.2 million dollars above four million dollars, so when will the public have the chance to vote on this?
I believe the motion was written, would you mind?
Motion is to amend the bond, to add 1.1 million for Lynn Classical repairs and 1.1 million for Lynn Tech and Breed Windows. And according to the city charter, the bond will be placed on the ballot in the new year at the same time, and as a separate question as the bond for the New Marshall Middle School.
New year, thank you.
Attorney Vitale, question. If Counsel Seer withdraws his motion, and we set this down for a public hearing, and we have a public hearing, would Counsel Seer then be able, if he so desires, to bring this motion up again at that time?
Yes. Case closed.
Counsel Seer, would you be willing to withdraw your motion?
You know, I'll tell you something, you know, I just want to say, because I'm compromised. And if I knew this, it'd be the first time anybody's compromised on this whole thing. And I'm serious, just to get it out there on the floor. And I will remove my motion. You know, I am a little upset about it, but I'll do it. And I guarantee, I will lay that motion again at the next meeting. I still feel as though we're not ready to bring it out there. I still have fear that this is really going to handle. The building of that new middle school, and I, and other schools, because it's kind of really hurt all the projects that come down the road. I know there are councils who are going to get things that were promised on this list, and I can respect that, understand, because they're looking out for their bond, and they're looking to do something good for their bond. But every single time we're coming into an election year, we're going to allow a counselor to make a proposal to bring a couple million dollars into their bond, and put Smithies out, and everybody else. I will remove my motion.
Counsel Trahan.
Before we second Counsel Seer's motion, I'd just like to have Counsel Seer think a little bit about that, because now, when we advertise this public hearing, that's not going to be on it. We want everybody to be aware of everything that all the councils are looking for. I don't know if anybody agrees with that, but, so by now, when it's in the paper, or when we're ready for a public hearing, all these extra millions of dollars aren't going to be there. So people, some people aren't going to come, some people are. I think it should all be on the agenda. I think it should all, all be there. So when they come, they know what they're talking about, just like we know what we're talking about. So I, I would ask, I would ask Counsel Seer to think, you know, really think about, you know, even though it's a compromise, I think that's a very important issue. I think the money should be there. People should know that we're talking about spending maybe six million dollars, and so.
Counsel Trahan, if, if you would indulge Counsel Seer in withdrawing his motion, we can make sure that Counsel Seer's motion becomes part of the, the next agenda, and advertise accordingly, so people will see all the potential money that's going to come in. Is that okay? Okay. I don't think we need a, a motion, because no motion was taken on withdrawing your motion. So I'll just sit down with the chair. There's a motion on the table to set down for a public hearing. The bond as written here, any further discussion that has not been already brought up?
Question. And I need to just.
Oh.
So have we take this vote to set this down for a public hearing? Will we have a vote on my motion to add that to that discussion?
This is what, in theory, could happen. Set down a public hearing, we would have a public hearing. If he were so inclined to bring this motion again, and have support of six votes of the counselors, not only would we have a public hearing on this issue, but we would be mandated by city charter to put this on the ballot, so the public would have a public hearing and have the ability to vote.
So I make that motion at the next.
Would it, it would be at the conclusion of a public hearing, which would require six votes to amend the existing?
For the sake of that, ending the madness tonight, I'll go.
Thank you, Counsel Seer. Any further discussion on setting down for a public hearing?
Consul Akon.
Just a point of clarification, if this makes me feel better. If, if, if this was brought up in March, when Counsel Frank first brought it up, this would be in an election, this would be coming up in an election. I don't think, I don't think he would be demanding that way. I think everything in there, tried to depress the peace of everybody on the council. So, you know, I think if it was done at a time to matter, he wouldn't be able to say that. I just wanted to.
Yeah, I do think that there was value in having Mike Dunn have been, Kathy Latham have committed separate meetings and give us their presentation. Any further discussion on setting down for a public hearing?
Counsel Ford.
I just want to be clear, when we invite Jamie Marsh and the grant writer, and the grant writer's coming, there's some things here that we may be able to get rid of, standard of four million.
If you'd like, we'll have Mr. Karen, Mr. Fortucci, Mr. Spencer, Mr. Marsh, Dr. Latham, if you can break everybody up, that you have any, if you want to ask any questions up, I think that being all inclusive is wise. Any further discussion?
Counsel Akon.
So, when we advertise this for all public hearing, are we listing everything that's going to be on this bond?
Yes.
But some of the stuff is already being done, so what's happening with that?
We, this, this will be, and I don't want to speak for the city clerk, but this will be advertised specifically as was listed here on the public agenda.
Even if the things are being done right now, they're still going to be listed on the ballot.
And, and that's part of the debate that will happen at the public hearing, and what the council decides to do. Counsel Seer.
Thank you. And again, so if I make that motion at the next meeting, to add that 2.2 million to this bond, if we don't take out, or some of, you know, if we don't take away 2.3 million of what's here, then we'll have to have another public hearing.
If you add 2.2 million dollars with six votes of the council, that will go on the ballot, and the voters will decide on a, in a special election, according to your motion, at the same time that the special election will occur on the bond question of Marshall Middle School, which will save the city from having, from having two elections. I'm assuming was your attempt. Counsel Kalucia.
President, we have to invite Carolina there too, because she's, you know, we have to do away with inviting this. So she has to be invited to this process.
Wise decision.
Counsel Nat.
I also have, kind of wondering, can, really, his total commission be a part of this? Because this is one of the two parks in playgrounds, so they're part of that, so you're, should we be a part of this?
Counsel, I missed the first part here.
Okay, link his, link his total commission.
Yeah.
So here they are, he's involved in this, because I think it's still a part of it.
Sure, we could invite them as well, absolutely.
Because they should be a part of this, because they probably know, know what happens about, so which option would you face about?
And as you well know, public hearing, anybody has the ability to come and speak at a public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Any other discussion?
Sure.
No? Hold on, I said, how for a public hearing? Seconded, which has been made and seconded and discussed.
Counsel Biden.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Akon.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Kalucia.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Frank.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer.
Yes.
No, Counsel Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Nat.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
No.
No, none, yes.
Any other new business?
Sure.
On favor, any discussion?
How do you guys get it? Oh.